We'll call this meeting as a commissioning order. Please join us.
Man, I forgot to hit them all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. We will begin at the minutes of our September 3rd meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I second that.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the minutes of the September 3rd meeting. All in favor, signify with a say aye. Three ayes, Jane. Okay, first up on our agenda today is Heather Caldwell, the Extension Office.
First up, I like it.
Well, I sent you all an email, I believe, yesterday, whatnot, but I did want to come forward and present in person that I have resigned from the Purdue Extension Office. My last day will be next Friday, the 27th. No dramatic reason for it. I've gotten married in the last month, and some new opportunities have come up with that, that I've decided to go ahead and follow those avenues and those opportunities. So, I'm really sad to leave. It's been just over five years that I've been here. I've learned so much about county government, city government, partners in the community, how hard people work to make things happen for our community. It's given me a whole new respect for people who are public servants and who work in the nonprofit world and just government officials in general. So, it's really opened my eyes to a lot of things. And I'm super grateful for five years of this opportunity. My 4-H families are near and dear to my heart. Those kiddos, I'm gonna miss them a lot. It's been a fun learning opportunity for me to get to know them and their families. And just to reach the community at large, it's been a wonderful experience. So, I'm sad to leave, but I'm excited for new opportunities coming forward. I will not be a stranger to Fayette County 4-H. I'll be signing up October 1st to be a volunteer and hopefully being as active as is appropriate with the new staff that comes aboard. There will be a position that will open, of course, with my leaving. That will happen, I've been told, probably early November when that job will be posted. Our office will post that on social media pages and other avenues of marketing, so we'll let everybody know that. Since my last day is September 27th, then that Monday, September 30th, Stephanie McCurdy will become the county extension director. She will get that promotion with that. She's been here two years. She's awesome, she's great, she's learning quickly and getting to know our 4-H families and the community at large. She's done a really great job at reaching out to different partners and working on the health aspect of our community as well, so I know she's gonna continue to do great things. Naya, of course, is our office manager. She'll be there, she's been there a year and a half, and we were just talking this morning about just how she's learning and leaps and bounds, and her confidence is growing, and she's such a great asset to that office, and I'm really glad that she's been there. So, I do want to say one thing to members of the community. I do want to encourage, if you don't understand something, if you don't like something, volunteer, ask questions, go talk to people in person, you know, don't take to social media. On situations where you have an opportunity to learn, take those opportunities to get involved, because without this job and me being able to get involved, there's so much I wouldn't know and I wouldn't have learned. So, I encourage community members to do that, to just, every group in the community needs a volunteer, needs help. Find your place and volunteer as best you can, 'cause that'll be a huge benefit for you, for each of them. So, but I wanted to tell you personally, so, thank you, guys. You guys and council have been huge supporters of Extension since day one that I started, and I appreciate that very much. It's been a huge, a huge help to have you guys be helping us and encouraging us and just being a support system, so I appreciate that for all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate you very much, and we'll miss you.
Thank you.
For your face and your spirit to do the work you've done.
Thank you. I appreciate it. If you have questions, again, Extension Office door is always open, so feel free to go downstairs and chat with them. We enjoy when you guys stop by, so we hope you continue to do so. All right. Dale, you all right?
Well, Heather, once again, I'll express my disappointment that you're leaving.
Fair enough.
But I do wish you all the luck in your new endeavors.
Thank you.
I always knew some man was gonna come along and swoop you up and take you away. It has happened.
Did it, right, that's right.
He's one lucky guy.
Thank you. I'll be sure to remind him of that.
You do that. But you, just don't be a stranger. We really value you, and you've been a great addition to 4-H, that's for sure.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that. It's been a great career, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, well...
But I won't be a stranger. I will be, I'll definitely be coming around.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all. You have any questions? Like I said, I'm here till Friday, or come on down. All right. Thank you all.
All right. Missy Kavanaugh is here for the Health Department. Missy, you have a 144 request?
Yes. We, Bruce Price is going to transfer, transition over to a full-time. He's our part-time food inspector, and we're transitioning over into the environmental position. Do you guys need this paper?
Here, print it.
Okay, so say, Matt always gives it to me, and I don't know what to do with it.
Is Bruce gonna keep the same title?
Yeah, he's still gonna be the food inspector, I believe, also.
Okay. Environmental specialist. I guess we should add, too, that this is, this is made possible by the additional funding that the, through the state, that the governor was helping me to do.
Yes, yes.
What's your pleasure?
I second.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the 144 request for the Health Department to make Bruce Price, the environmental specialist, a full-time position rather than the part-time position that he's previously held. Any further question? All in favor, signify with a say aye. Three ayes, Jane. Anything else, Missy?
Yeah, I do, I need to ask if we could get permission for next week, we're gonna have our cruise-in, our mobile flu clinic, next, not this Saturday, but the next Saturday, and we are borrowing Union County's medical trailer, medical unit trailer. I want to bring it over here so we can get it prepared and cleaned up and everything, and I was asking if we could get permission. It's kind of a long one, so if we could get, be able to use like two to three parking spots, somewhere in the county parking spots. So, I didn't know if I need to ask permission, but I'm asking permission, or, 'cause I didn't want it be pulled up out there and somebody be like, "What in the world's that?" So, we'll have to get it like prepared and get our refrigeration unit in there and, you know, wipe it down and everything like that, just make sure it's ready to go for Saturday. I'm shooting to bring it over, have Alvin bring it over like Wednesday evening, and then we would occupy the spaces Thursday and Friday, and then we would pull it out Saturday.
So, it'd be gone before they have the farmer's market out here on Saturday morning?
No, no, I'll have it up there. Our cruise-in is up at the park pavilion, so, but we'll have, I mean, I was just gonna bring it, one of our spots out here, just so everybody in the office can pitch in and get it cleaned up and prepared for Saturday.
I was just thinking of the timing, 'cause I know on Saturday morning, all those people come in out here in the parking lot.
Uh-huh. Oh, it'll be, it'll be gone early in the morning, yeah, 'cause I plan on being up there like at 6:00 in the morning.
Okay, that's perfect.
And Alvin doesn't know yet, but he'll be up there at 6:00 in the morning.
He's not gonna sleep in, is he?
I hope he will. I'm sure, I'm sure he won't. He'll be a tequila.
That'd be Wednesday of next week?
Yeah, I probably won't have him bring it over until Wednesday evening, and then it would be occupied Thursday and Friday during working hours.
Motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the, at the Health Department, park, trailer out here. All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. Wherever you can find a place to put it, Missy, we guarantee you it's not gonna get towed away.
Okay, all right. Then I just wanted to remind you guys that we have the labs up and going, the low-cost labs, and we've had a couple of people come in, so people are gradually inquiring about it. So, I'm kinda excited. I think it's, it's gonna be a good service for everybody, so we just keep putting it on our Facebook page and website, so if anybody has any questions, feel free to call or inquire about it. So, other than that, I don't have anything else.
I anticipate those lab services being used quite a bit once everybody learns that it's available now.
Yeah, Jared, Jared's been very nice. He's put it in the paper for us and been a good advocate for it and everything, so, but we've had people already calling about it, and we've already got like a couple people scheduled for it, not this week, but the next, the next go-round when we, when we offer them, 'cause we offer them every other week. So, yeah, I'm, I'm excited about it. That's it.
Great. Thanks, Missy.
Thank you.
The Highway Department, Jay Howland. Jay, you got anything today to share?
Let you know, the chip seal went pretty well, and we've got half what we're gonna pave up the Bentonville area done, and soon we got our paper back on the ride, back on running, we'll be back up there and finish it. I don't know how long it's gonna take, but we're putting cans in right now if we need to put in when we gotta break, and we're gonna try to get as many of them in before we go back up there. Down here, we do some breast trimming, too, so...
Remind us again, how many miles of chip seal did we do?
We did 15 miles. We did a Waterloo area over in there, we did Harrisburg Road, we did front of school all the way down to Sykes Road, went all the way down that, I have 200 down there, I think it's 200. And then we did 200 north, all the way into town, the top of the hill. We stopped right after the yellow lines at the top of the hill. They were gonna cover up the striping going down over the hill. Everything but the intersection in Harrisburg looks pretty good, intersection on 200, that we used to call Stop Sign City, where T's off right there, 200 and 200. Yep. They did some doughnuts in it while it was still fresh. It don't look as bad as Harrisburg, but it, it's better than what Harrisburg is. But Harrisburg, we're gonna have to sweep it again, it's just mess. Just took everything off of it, 'cause it was spinning their tires and everything else, and they was trying to take off the stop signs. They needed to go easy, and they didn't go easy. Just happens.
Yeah, it's nice of them to do that.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be interesting to see now how this gravel sticks compared to our old machine.
Couple, but couple months, you shouldn't know for sure whether it's gonna stay or not. Traffic keeps on it. First time you drop a plow in the wintertime, it'll tell you right away whether it's gonna plow to stay.
Yeah.
But last year, we didn't have to drop a plow at all, so...
I hope we don't this year, either.
That ain't what I'm hearing.
I'll, I'll be checking the persimmon seeds soon, and then I'll let you know for sure.
That's all I got, so...
Okay. Anybody got anything for Jay? Back to Jay. IT Director Michael King. Michael, you have some proposals here for your firewall.
Yeah, the firewall that we got a couple weeks ago, or a month ago, for the 911 Sheriff's Department and firewall that worked there at the jail, or CPD for the spillment system, found out we needed a license on it for the VPN part of it. Normal day, we run about 18 to 23 people on there all at the same time, but if we had an emergency situation where it was kind of like all hands on deck, we'd probably run like 40 with EMA and everybody else that would be all on at the same time. So, getting a 50 simultaneous license would be option three and four there on the SHI quote, which is 417270 for line item three, which is the Cisco Anticall VPN, 50 simultaneous delivery, and then the support line item for that, which is the next item, which is number four, and that is 115269 for a total of $5,325.39. So, and that is not something I found, I didn't find that out till he was installing it and found out that we didn't have that license, and like, "Oh, yeah, we have to have that." So, one of those, "Oh, great, here's more money."
Yeah. So, those are, those are the two that you need out of the entire list?
Yeah, I had him quote 25, 50, and 100 to see where the, what the price differences were. I mean, if it was like a $200 difference for the 100, I was gonna say, "If you get the 100." But obviously, it's quite a bit different for 100 than it is for 50, so there's no reason to go for the 100 when it's a significant price difference, and we don't need that many. You're, we're jumping from 4,000 to 8,000 with that one line item, so, but it just jumped a little bit, you know, I might've said, "Just go ahead and get it," but it doesn't jump, just a little bit. And the, the $4,000 line item, that's perpetual, so that's one-time payment. The $1,100 item, the, is an annual, so unfortunately, we have to pay that every year, so...
Well, the alternative is being more vulnerable to cyber attack.
Yeah. And that's how Cisco's, their, their business model has changed, that's how they, they make their money now, is they nickel and dime you with these annual contracts, and that's how they, they've stayed at the top of the stack for the firewall world is they, in the wireless world, is they, you know, every device that they sell you, they sell an annual contract that you have to pay to keep the device working. So, they have nice devices, but here you go, here's an extra $250 here, another $250 there, and as soon as you don't pay it, the device doesn't work. Kinda like paying for gas, I guess. You don't pay for the gas, you don't have a car that moves.
Right. For all we know, hackers are working for them.
That honestly would not surprise me sometimes.
And you said this annual thing was the licensing, that we just had it, you just basically didn't know that this is gonna be...
Yeah, the previous firewall we had did not have that, and there were two options for the firewall that we could get, either the ASA or the next-generation firewall. I got the next-generation firewall because it had more options and more options for content filter and threat defense than the ASA version. The ASA version, apparently, you don't have to have the, this license, it includes the VPN stuff in it, whereas the next-generation firewall does not, and the website and the way the, their website list stuff was very confusing and not very clear on that, so... So, I got the extra features for threat defense as far as antivirus and keeping out that kinda stuff, content filter, that kinda thing, but it doesn't, you know, didn't make it clear as far as, "Oh, yeah, you have to pay for this other thing, too." So, but since the threat defense stuff is really more and more antivirus stuff, or the ransomwares, that kinda thing slip in, it's better to block that stuff out.
And both of these are software, is right?
Basically, yeah.
Do you got that in your budget?
Yeah.
I'll move it through.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the purchase of two software sets for the IT Department. If you have a copy of this list, Jane, if you don't, I'll give you this if you need it. The Cisco Anticall VPN and the Swiss Upgrades Cisco Anticall. Any further questions? All in favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
And that's all, have you got any agreement? Okay. I'll get it ordered.
Okay, thanks. Sheriff Jones, do you have anything today?
Yes. The contract for the IRAX program that we run in the jail, we're coming up on a year now, close to it, and they're wanting to renew the contract. At first, they were saying we were gonna have to start paying a portion of it, but they found the money at the state level, so this is something the state's paying for. We've got five employees inside the jail that are hired through the state, and they're providing services. It's like having five extra jail officers in there that the state's paying for. They're doing groups with the inmates, they're doing sort of therapy, basically. They have a lady that meets everybody once they get released from jail, helps them get into treatment if that's what they want, helps them get IDs, insurance, birth certificates, so they can go out and try to find a job. It's been pretty successful. They're still compiling the numbers to see how successful it is, because we started late, so we're not quite at the year point yet, but we really need to keep this going. They also give us $30,000 to help with the program. I bought new radios with that money for the, their employees. We bought several desks, chairs, a lot of stuff for the inmates, chairs for the inmates so they can have their groups. We purchased some TVs. They also let us use some of that money to help pay for our new canine, because that also goes in the jail and does some work in there, so it's been a pretty big benefit to us, so we just need to keep this going. I just want to give you guys a copy of the contract if you wanna go through it. I just need to eventually sign it and send it back to them. If you guys find a reason that we shouldn't do it, we can discuss it, but if you wanna go over the contract, then we can talk about it next time, but...
I was gonna ask how successful you thought this program was, but it sounds like this, you find no fault with it.
No fault whatsoever. They're, they're helping our jail staff. Again, they got radios, so they go back, they solve a lot of problems, our flights have went down, our populations went down. I don't know if that's because of this, but, I mean, we're sitting at, I think, 118 inmates right now, and normally this time of year, we're 130, 140. So, is it this, or is it just people are not doing crimes? I don't know, but I like to think maybe this is a little part of it, so it's something that I think we need to keep going. Again, it employs five, five people, I think they're gonna try to hire another one, and the state pays for all of that, and they give us a little extra money to help us out, so that's just a benefit to everybody.
Okay, so we can keep this program for another year at no cost?
At no cost, and they're gonna pay us, so, I mean, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, that doesn't make much sense, but...
Yeah, I want you to contract, and I mean, I know better, but...
Yeah, there's no, there's no financial obligation from us or from anyone in the contract. It's kind of, but it does say they'll pay us $30,000. The only thing that really is up our, what we're doing for consideration is that it has, that he'll have to accomplish the things, the services that the jail will have to provide, and he's willing to do so, so I don't see any issues.
They wanna report every month of how many people we booked in, how many we released, what crimes they were charged with, and that's data we always compile anyway, so it's pretty easy for me to pull that together.
I, I think that's essentially the compensate, the $30,000 compensation is for them, to be able to give them that information.
And if at some point we say this isn't working, there's a, we can get out of the contract, it's 30 days.
I don't want you to do that right after you get the $30,000 payment. I hope that they pay that, once over, they pay that.
They did it, the first time now, they're saying they're gonna pay 7,500 every, every quarter, so...
That feels better than, let's not take 30 grand as...
Take the money and run, yeah.
If I remember right, wasn't this like a pilot program?
We were, the pilot program was two years ago. There were five counties, and then we jumped in right behind that, so we were in the second year, and in my opinion, it's, it's doing great things, and it's starting to grow. They're going into, I think, 11 or 12 more jails this coming year, so it's getting bigger. It's gonna be something that everybody's gonna start doing.
Was it the Department of Justice that was paying?
Uh, mental health.
Mental health, yeah.
Yeah.
So, just for the sake of people that hear IRAX, you wanna say what that stands for?
Integrated Reentry and Correctional Support. The integrated reentry, they're helping these people, our inmates, as they come out of jail, instead of going back to what they've always known, trying to get them into the workforce, treatment possibly, and then correctional support, they do support our correctional staff. They, they're there talking to inmates every day and de-escalating problems, 'cause they get to know these inmates pretty well, so the guards deal with them one way, these workers deal with them another way, and a lot of times, they can solve the problems before it gets to something silly.
So, it's even, I could see it, I mean, it's sort of like training, then, really, for the guys in there, about how to handle these things.
Yeah.
That's good.
And the jail staff's coming around. We were told that it would take a while for the jail staff to warm up to them, but they're, they're coming around, and they realize that they're there to help, so it's, it's been a good program. I'm happy with it.
That's great.
If I read right here, this, this contract would run from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025?
Yeah.
So, we're absolutely a little lapsed right now.
Yeah, that's how it was last year. We started a little late, because they couldn't get people to come in, they couldn't find the employees, so we started late, and for some reason, I can email back and tell them to fix that, but they run it from July 1st to June 30th, that's, I guess that's just their budget year.
Okay.
But they're still going right now. They're, they're using the money that they got from last year to continue.
There's no harm in us in keeping it July 1, in my opinion. Yeah, we can get out of this in 30 days, and that'll last, so I don't care.
Okay, so you need a, you need a newly signed copy for...
Yeah, yeah, it's still complimentary. I just wanted, there was a signature based on here for me, they're fine with my signature, and as long as you guys are okay with it, I'm happy to sign it, and we'll continue doing this.
Okay. Well, I see no reason to mess with it if it's working. What's your pleasure?
I see a motion that we approved for Zach to continue the IRAX program with the jail.
Second.
We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to allow the sheriff to continue the IRAX program at the county jail for another year. Any further questions? All in favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane.
After it is signed, will you give me a signed copy, please?
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thanks, Sheriff. Surveyor Bill Mackey. Bill, do you have anything?
Not a, any that.
Well, Paul, Paul, I'm calling you. I know that there's been some discussion between you and Dick Robertson there about a grant opportunity for the road sign.
Yeah, there's, Endot has set aside $50 billion for highway safety improvement projects, which involves the local and local type things, and some of the things we're looking at, one of the things... looking at, one of the things we're looking, and it qualifies here, sign inventory, and you could get, you could get, right now, they're just taking sign inventories, where you take the inventory, locate every, I gotta turn, I got the hearing things, I gotta get turned down a little bit. Okay. You go out and take an inventory of all your signs, and locations, and so forth, then you take also a reflectivity of that sign, and you inventory that as well, and all that is all created on a GIS system. Jay was telling me that had like a sign system, that we could probably attach it to that sign system to update it, and then like the next year, after that, then you could apply to replace all those signs, basically to update all the signs that you have. It's all the signs that everything, the road numbers and road game signs, you don't replace those. It's all your stop signs and regular door signs, things like that. The office had just done a valuation of Randolph County, and so what I did was ask them to take it to Henry County, and it looks like that the number to do that's probably about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and the feds paid ninety percent of that, and paid ten, so your chances of getting it are, to me, very good, because they're a small county, but, you know, you never know, you know? It doesn't hurt to apply, it doesn't cost you anything to apply, and I've got all the information already put together, and all you guys have to say is yes, and I can ship it all to Bill, and a couple weeks that you can send it in, because you're not due until the eleventh of October, so you guys can do that if you're interested in doing it. I would highly recommend, and there's a lot of counties across the state of Indiana that have done it so far, there's also counties that are doing, another one you might consider later on, don't come back again, has, would be road striping, if I wanna consider road striping, your heavily traveled roads again, and get the feds to take care of that. One thing about the sign, I'll go back to, go back to the sign replacement. We worked with Henry County on setting up their sign replacement program, and we actually did it in a couple phases, because it's really kinda expensive when you go replace all your signs at one time, and the other bad, from my experience, the other bad part, I don't wanna replace them all at one time, and no, in seven or eight years, because where a reflectivity usually goes away, that I'm gonna have to replace them all again, at my cost, so we could set that up the next time, where you're doing, say, four townships, four townships, four townships, or half a county in one way or the other, so that way you don't have everything all at one time, so that's something to think on the next phase when you go talk about replacing them, things like that. I know, I'm probably pretty sure that probably half your signs, at least, probably need to be, I just guess it, probably need to be replaced, most counties are about that way, because of the signs to replace right now, most I'm not sure, reflectivity's still good, but you've got signs out there right now, but you haven't gotten to every county that, and that's what this inventory will do, and like I say, NDOT has set aside fifty million dollars for you to do it, you might as well try to get some of that money.
We're only paying ten percent of the cost?
It's your money, basically. So if you guys are interested, I can get Bill the information, and he's gonna file it by October 11th, and Commissioners will have the signing commitment letter, and the Council will have the signing commitment letter, and you can do that in the first week of October, and that's still playing time that Bill can get everything turned in, and we can help him with getting, help him to have the tickets, it's not a big deal. We've already done one for Randolph County already.
Well, I went over that information that you sent, and to, to have a sign inventory would be good, I think. Jay, do we have anything that even approaches an accurate sign inventory?
One time we did, but then we lost, we lost the program back, what, about ten years ago, and we haven't had one since, they've been doing everything on paper now, and booklets, so I'm not sure, I'd have to give it to Brian and see what he got.
Okay.
But that one time they had one, when you could run it off on the computer, they told you what you had, when it was put in, where it was at, give you all the location, didn't it, Bill?
Well, would that, would that all that be useful to your department?
Oh, I guarantee it'd be useful. It'd help you keep track of ones that needs to replace all the time, instead of having to go out and hunt them up.
I, I don't know the value of changing out a sign, a perfectly good sign that's still working, you know?
Well, the, the value of the inventory is identifying places where you don't have a sign and you need a sign. That's the value of the inventory. The inventory is everything that you got, but they also evaluate places where you do not have a sign, and from my experience, you, you need to have that inventory, you know what you got, and you need to have it updated, and here you got a chance to, that we've got a GIS department, and they've set up, created a GIS system, we could probably get in contact with the old system that they have, and try and see what it takes to get that back up and going, or is it, I don't know, does county have a GIS system?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we could work with that. County's GIS system, create a layer, and Highway Department could use this problem. We could do that, but we've done that several times, so we'll do that, special bridge inspections, things like that.
Yeah, that would be good. Now, that hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar figure that I read for the inventory, was that for Randolph County, or was that what your estimate for Fayette County?
No, that's for, that's for Fayette County.
Okay, alright, so then.
Yeah, Randolph County does a lot more than that.
Okay, so we would be at ten percent of that amount?
Yeah, you got ten percent of that. It's like a one twenty-seven, four hundred dollars, and so you'd have twenty-seven, four hundred dollars of it. Or twelve, twelve, twelve thousand, thousand, so forth.
You two have any interest in pursuing this?
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, it's good, especially getting our GSS, our sign inventory back online, too.
Yeah, I, anytime you get a chance to get federal money back to do it, I mean, it's coming from Federal Highway Department, that's, and everybody in Fayette County's could work to that one, like gas, you need to try to get your share back. You know, you do on your bridge inspections, and you do on the bridge, bridges that you replace, and any chance you can get it, get it. If you don't get it, your local county's getting your share, so you need to try to get it, yeah.
Okay, so you would need a letter of commitment from us?
To what?
You would need a letter of commitment from us?
Yes, I've already filled, already got that filled out, all of these is your signature, and so I'll get that to Bill, and they can present that to you guys, to you guys, and go from there.
And then meantime, y'all will be getting that inventory.
You guys will say, yeah, let's, let's go, and let's try and get it, and then we can make that.
The county council still have that.
Yeah, county council still have it.
I'm gonna push that, we can reform with it.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to move forward with the county highway sign inventory grant, and authorize county surveyor and the county highway supervisor to do whatever is needed to move this project forward, get us all the papers to sign, and any information we need. Good enough? All the favors signify to say an aye. Three ayes, Jane. Get that to us, Bill, as soon as you can, and we'll try to beat that deadline, and we'll have to present this at the, to the council, their first meeting in October, and hopefully it'll work out right. Dick, I wanna thank you for bringing that up for us, because I hadn't seen that, and you're in a position, you get to see a lot of things that I don't. Thanks for sharing all that. County attorney, do you have anything?
Not today.
Okay. Anybody have any mail we would need to share? Anybody have anything on our old business? Anything on our new business? I did get a request the other day from somebody in the Columbia neighborhood, requesting a children at play signs in Columbia. They were suggesting maybe a sign of north and south of the four-way intersection there in Columbia. I don't know how many, how many kids there are in that community now, but this came from a parent out there.
I think there's a lady that does childcare in Columbia now, so for sure, it's probably needed.
Do we have any of those on an inventory, Jay?
I have no idea, is Gary's any in stock or not? Cause he quit putting them up for a long time there.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if he got any, he can order some, but we'll have to give it to Cincinnati down there.
Well, what do you wanna do? You wanna have Jay take a look, see, look at the inventory, and then maybe look at the site down there and see what should or shouldn't be done?
Well, I would say we should do it, based on the request, it doesn't make sense not to do it, in my opinion, but I just think we could, Brian, Brian's a sign guy, ask him to.
Yeah, if you're gonna do about a good four of them, one, all four quarters, east, south, and east, west, and north and south.
Yeah.
And there is a lot, they do have a lot of activities at the Columbia school, and they have a playground, you know, there, so there is a lot of kids hanging out in that area with families, or, like, they just had a chicken dinner there a couple weeks ago, and so I'd say it's definitely merit to have that.
Well, this person's comment was, the better the roads are, the faster people drive. And that, we all know that.
Just hope it's not me.
Well, you wanna authorize Jay to get into that?
Sure, I'll make a motion. Jay, can you move forward with the children at play signs for the Columbia area?
We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to authorize, do you have on to proceed with placing children at play signs in Columbia neighborhood, within, around the four ways area there?
Outskirts of town, in all four directions.
Yeah. All the favors signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Anybody have anything else on our new business?
I do. I guess we oughta look at a burn ban.
I knew you was gonna say that.
Yeah.
We got rain coming.
Uh-huh.
I guarantee if there's a cornfield fire, it'll be one of you guys setting. I know you will.
They had a campfire fire last night, so.
Well, they did, didn't they?
Good night.
To the best of my knowledge, none of our neighbors are doing that yet.
Franklin County, Wayne, or Franklin, Union, Henry, Shelby.
That's all.
Have all one of their.
Oh, they have, have it.
Lady dear, I'm marked out.
Yep. And actually, Channel thirteen said today there was even more, county's adding to it today.
So I'm second that, burn ban.
Did you make a motion?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not a big fan of that stuff, but I'm not gonna cause ruckus over, you know, if somebody deliberately sets a fire, that's, that's one thing.
Well, I think that would give the sheriff more teeth if somebody is abusing it.
Who, who enforces these bans?
I believe the sheriff.
We're gonna call the Walther Department, we're just gonna help it.
Okay.
Okay, so Dale made a motion?
Yeah, Dale.
Tracy seconded a motion.
Dale made a motion, got a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to impose a burn ban for Fayette County, and how long is this burn ban supposed to go?
Till rain.
Until the next rain.
Good rain.
Good rain.
To further this, yeah.
Motion is, by Dale Munson, is to impose a burn ban for the county until the next rain. All the favors signify to say an aye.
I said aye.
You said aye, okay.
You guys are having a good time.
What are you saying?
Yeah, two ayes and one reluctant aye. Now, if I.
Don't be burning there, Dale.
I'm telling you now.
I'll be driving down your road out there.
You do that, you tell them, and I'll not get mad about it. I just had, I had to burn some grass just a couple of days ago.
Oh, that's a good thing you got that ban, the burn ban.
It was okay.
And there was no problem whatsoever.
Yeah, you're experienced, you know, on the.
Any, anything else on our new business? Okay. Is there any patron concerns in the room today, from anyone? The mayor is here, mayor, do you have anything to share?
I'm good.
Okay. All that leaves is claims and payroll.
Claims and payroll.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve claims and payroll. All the favors signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Three ayes, Jane. would be good, I think. Jay, do we have anything that even approaches an accurate sign inventory? or was that what your estimate for Fayette County?